Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, October 19th at 5:30 PM. Now this is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, both a regular meeting and our second budget meeting. I'd like to call a meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Rethauer?
Here.
Fudrow?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Follig?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Here, thank you. Item three is public appearances and item A, discussion with a hotel developer, SNL Hospitality. If you was here in the front row, you'll come to the microphones, please, and reduce yourselves.
Thank you. I am Eric Lund with SNL Hospitality, the owner of SNL. We're a hospitality hotel development and management company based in Verona, Wisconsin. We currently manage a number of hotels in the area. We have the Clarion Suites at Alliant Energy and we've got the Howdy and Express in Verona and building the Fairfield in Verona as well. And formerly was one of the founders of Great Wolf Resorts, the water park company that we built eight of those before we went public in 2004. And then my partner and I left to start SNL Hospitality in 2005. So thanks for having us, having me here tonight. And I guess it's a formal request. You've been given some information from Mike. And we're just requesting some assistance and help on the project in Tiff District Four to develop a nationally flagged 75-room hotel. We feel that it's, time is right for the market and a lot of things that are going on within the community that would serve this hotel well. And we would love to build it with the help of the village. So we're asking for some Tiff assistance. And I don't know if I've gotta discuss the amounts or if that's been shared.
It's been shared.
Okay.
It's in our package.
Okay. But I'm happy to answer any questions about myself, the company, or the project. But we're here just formally asking for the requests from the village to help with the project.
Thank you. So open it to questions, Frank, please.
I would just, if you wouldn't mind putting him out on the record, I think it'd be good for the public to know what you're asking for.
Okay. We're asking for $1 million of assistance on the project. We've supplied information on both the development costs and the pro forma. And to get the attention of an investor or to make the development feasible for the first three years till we get to stabilization, otherwise it's gonna lose money and it'd be hard to help raise the money to make the project successful.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, I'd also like to know how, if staff, how, what staff's thoughts are on that.
I'll tell you that in closed session.
Okay. I'll be there.
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
Do you think the staff wants?
Nope. So that's all we'd have now. And we will be doing one more item and then going into closed session.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
So item B is continuing a discussion with Jim Lees and possible, actually very possible cost sharing of improvements on Thompson Drive. Welcome, Jim.
This, the math you have in front of you.
Yeah, we all have this. Shows where the project is.
Yep.
Going down Netherwood, you would've noticed it.
Yep. Yeah, it's, we, there was a couple additional costs. We ended up having to, per just request, we went from plastic piping to concrete through part of it. And, you know, we talked with Mike and Jeff about possibly getting a resolution on that since a lot of this is on land that's not ours and, but we'll be bringing in tax dollars as those commercial lots are developed. So I don't know if it would be better if Jeff kind of explained where we're at on that, then.
Yeah, I can give a summary on this, just to kind of go back and, you know, if we're using the math that you have in front of you, that then photograph with the different letters on it. This all came about several weeks ago during the initial construction phase and kind of site clearing, I believe, for the Thompson Drive there between Netherwood and Richards. We received a phone call and said, there's, there's a structure, a storm structure, right where letter A is on the drawings. And no one knew where it was for or to. And we did some research and found that it was a discharge point from pipes connected to the Walgreens storm water pond, which is just east of the Walgreens building there. Kind of further analysis, I, you know, we ended up determining it was a, it was a storm water pipe that was, the intention was when Thompson Drive would be developed, that that water would be captured either in the storm sewer system in the roadway or conveyed down to the pond. Kind of further analysis showed several other areas. At, at letter B, there is a 12-inch diameter outlet pipe from the bank storm water system. And at letter C is the, what would be the drainage outlet location of overland flow from the apartments at that location there. The original design for Thompson Drive included kind of a, that a low point would be at the beginning of the yellow arrow, which is just near C. And that there would be storm inlets in the roadway at that point, convey it to a, I believe it's a 48-inch or 30?
Yeah, I think it's a 30-inch oval.
Yeah, it's a, it's a basically elliptical pipe laid on its side that conveys water back to that Thompson Drive storm water note. There's a concrete channel back there, which then dumps into the pond. Kind of my further review and digging into this, just doing some due diligence on it, found out that there had been, we have two commercial lots. And if you look at the letter G there, those, to the north and to the south of that letter G are two lots. One's right behind Moonstar Restaurants, the other one's right behind the, I call it PostNet, but I think it's another name.
Postal Connections.
Postal Connections now. Two lots back there that are actually zoned, I believe, commercial. They are not owned by Lees Development, Mary Jo Lees. They are not owned by, by her. But as part of the development, they were being required to put in water and sewer connections to those. I determined that there should also be a connection at that point at G for the storm sewer system to connect, to allow when, if and when those lots are developed in the future, that there would be a connection point for storm sewer off of any kind of devices they have at that site. At the time, there was, you know, it's, there was, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth on who's responsible for this. We had some discussion at last meeting. There are, you know, there's been kind of discussion going back and forth in the cost. It ranged anywhere from, I think it was $32,000 was the original cost estimate on it, up to $39,000, I believe is where it is now.
Right.
Thirty-eight, 39,000. Mr. Lees had come to the last, on the October 5th meeting, asking for consideration and working with staff in finding a, maybe some cost sharing on this. Part of the improvements would be, if you're still looking at the map, would be removing the outlet pipe at B and putting it, and, and since the ponds are connected, you can put it where that little yellow arrow is over near A. Combine those two streams, and then you see a dashed line down to the letter E. That would be a newly, a new dedicated storm water pipe that would discharge to that pond. And then over at C would be additional improvements, an inlet connected to the storm sewer system, and then piping that would extend from near C down to G that would connect into those two lots. The last item on this that's really non-storm water related is if you look right at the letter F, there is a, an existing driveway that's terminated right at the property line there. Excuse me. And the intent was, is when Thompson Drive would be finished, that, that would be a rear access to the bank. It's a very, very popular meeting room down there, gets a lot of activity. And that should've been part of the original, you know, design, at least going in there, at least showing the design in there. We've worked with the bank and the bank has accepted that that's a direct benefit to them, that they would pay for the costs associated with improving that, putting the apron in there, the concrete apron, the thickened sidewalk and everything like that. They would pay for that. And that was about, I think, $2,234.67. So the discussion has been, is the village willing to enter into a cost sharing agreement with Lees Construction? Is it Lees Construction or Lees Development?
Well, it would be Mary Jo Lees.
Mary Jo Lees, okay.
My building company's Lees Construction.
Okay, with, with Mary Jo Lees and, and sharing some of these costs. It was my recommendation that the cost to extend the storm sewer down to letter G, which is the two commercial lots not owned by Lees, would be about $9,800, is almost just under $10,000. We felt that that was a reasonable cost to do that, and that would be a reasonable cost sharing. Further discussion with Mr. Lees and his engineer today, they mentioned about possibly trying to increase that a little bit. Before, when we were talking with them, we were about at a third cost share with them as a, as a proposal. Obviously, this is all up to the board for review and approval. You are, you are capable of setting whatever, whatever you prefer. But, and, and they were coming to the board tonight requesting a cost share of $12,000. I would recommend if anything that the board does, a couple recommendations, anything you do, we'd just recommend it be a set amount, not based off of a percentage or unit, units used out in the field. That way, it just removes any kind of confusion later during final billing and that type of thing. Makes it very simple. If there was a cost sharing, any kind of payment to Mary Jo Lees or the, would be contingent upon a payment of all park fees and storm water fees. And I did have our clerk pull that up before this evening. And we do have outstanding fees of $12,000 for park fees and $896 for storm water fees. And then any kind of, any kind of, probably a developer's agreement modification, amendment? Is that what we were talking about, Matt, I believe? That it would be incorporated into the development amendment, to the developer's agreement, just so that it was in writing and taken care of. So I'd open it up for any kind of questions you might have or any comments from, I don't know, did that summarize it pretty well?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Follig?
Yes. Thanks for the overview, Jeff. That was really very helpful. What did you say the, the additional improvements are? What is the amount of that?
The, the total estimate from their contractor is $39,897.17.
Okay, so about $40,000.
Yep.
I think I'm gonna get a motion on the table for discussion.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion that the village of Oregon contribute $10,000 toward additional storm water improvements as part of the Thompson Drive construction. The payment shall be contingent upon full payment of any outstanding impact fees, developer fees, or any village fees owed by Lees Construction and/or Jim Lees or Mary Jo Lees, so.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Jim, how do you feel about that number? I just said it would be by.
Better than zero. It's, when we came through, when we met for several years on this, and then we asked what these things were, no one could give us an answer. And once we started, now we've committed to the project with, I mean, there's quite a bit of work already been done. It got, it got rolled up to a lot bigger number. I mean, $40,000 is not a small sum.
No.
Especially when we're doing a lot of work on the west side of the road, and none of that is really to our benefit as far as saleable lots. So you've got the whole cost is only being divided up by eight lots that we have. And I still haven't really gotten a good answer as to why Walgreens could stop in the middle of the road right away when the utility easement went right to that storm water pond. If they were just able to stop, build a drain to sink water in the middle of the roadway. And that roadway's been dedicated since like 92?
Yep.
I think, I mean, that, our, our land was designed to be built this way. We just hadn't got there yet, so they came in on top of us, dropped the water and left. I don't think anyone else is getting away with doing that. And now that's, of the different items that, that they're requesting, that's the most expensive one. I mean, that's fixing something that was allowed to be thrown on top of us. If you look, A is where that, there's like a, looks like a big manhole.
Yep.
And the water comes out of those ponds and then comes up out of that and basically floods that street right away. Whereas if they would've just continued to cross the street, they would've hit the utility easement and gone right into the pond, which is where we're running it now. And in all of our developments, we've had to prove where our water's going. Yet in these, it just ran across us. So it, it seems like we've been held to a different standard.
Jim, does the, you got an estimate here from Capital Underground? Which one of these items relates to that Walgreens storm water?
The first. Yep.
So it's the first one, says Walgreens.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Also, the $3,900, might want to show that at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, there's additional.
$3,300, I'm sorry.
There's additional on the bottom, $3,300. That goes, that's the Walgreens part also.
On the bottom, I don't find.
Additional storm.
Oh, Don.
Go.
$3,326.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Did we contact Walgreens at all?
We did not contact Walgreens. And when we spoke to the bank, both Walgreens and the bank have, had made accommodations for their storm water when they, when they installed their systems. I, I know Mr. Lees feels, we differ on a kind of an opinion on this as far as what, what is realistic and what, what should be allowed. I mean, you know, the storm water, I was trying to explain before how the storm water, if it's staying in the same basin area, you know, overall pre-development, then the only thing that the development, such as the bank or Walgreens, does is just changes maybe the pattern at which that runs off. And ideally, under our storm water regulation, the intensity and the duration of what that runs off. Okay, so we, we require that they reduce storm water from a 100-year storm down to a 10-year storm release rate, or a 10-year storm down to the two-year storm is our, is our standard. So it doesn't mean that the water doesn't run off anymore. It just runs off in a different pattern because it's going through their collection system and in their, into their detention system. And then, and then outlet from their property. So, you know, this is historically, even well before the bank or Walgreens developed, storm water came along this, you know, along this route and everything. You know, we've, we've maintained that, you know, that's part of development, is you deal with the water entering your property and you deal with the water on your property and, and going through your property and out at your property. So we haven't, I mean, there really was not a need in this situation to be contacting Walgreens. There wasn't any, it, the, the line that Walgreens is in, is in a, is in a platted easement. We came across the historical files on it, and there was a discussion, actually, there was a discussion of whether to put this, this round discharge manhole on the bank property in that easement, which would've been just uphill of the proposed Thompson Drive or down into the Thompson Drive area or Thompson Drive right away. And it was determined that it would be better where it's at right now because the bank at one time was talking about, they had the right to extend a gravel driveway from that, from that F location there on that drawing, down to East Netherwood Street. And that was kind of their plan. Why they didn't do that at that time, I'm guessing was probably cost or they didn't feel that they needed it. The bank was probably new at the time. But by locating that further out into the right away where it is now, meant that if they did put a gravel driveway in there, it wouldn't be coming out of that and going across the gravel road freezing and causing a maintenance issue at the time. That's what we found in the historical file.
Does Walgreens plan to have a driveway into, from that?
No. There's a, there is a, a house there along Netherwood Street, and there's no easement back there for them.
Okay, thank you.
So, Jeff, it sounds like when Walgreens was built, they met their responsibilities for storm water.
I haven't gone back and verified it, but I'm sure they, they had to go through the same permitting as everyone else and, and I.
Yeah, makes sense. It would've had, it would've met our requirements at that time.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question for Matt. Matt, how were you obligated to pay anything on these costs at all?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Legally speaking.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? No, personally, I think, I think $10,000 is reasonable. We, Mr. Lees has done a nice job in town, but even setting that aside, we've, we've made other changes in projects where there were unforeseen costs that came up that we felt were reasonable, that it wasn't the developer's fault, something came up that wasn't known at the time, like it sounds like this is. And we've done things to try to help and offset some of that, so.
And if I could add to, you know, I, I know Jim's been a good partner with the village on his projects and things like that. And while I know it's not what you want, I think it's a fair amount, given the fact that legally, we wouldn't have to do anything. And again, regretfully, oh, not regretfully, but I'm sorry, we just can't honor your request for 12, or I can't, you know.
So we met with Jim this, this afternoon, I mean, Jeff kind of touched on it a little bit. So I think, I think you're actually asking for another $2,000 on top of that, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, when, when we met, the requirements that Jeff wanted, we, in order against that previous board meeting, Tim did the drawings and Jeff wanted more than just an engineer's estimate, so Capital bid that out. That was the number that we were working on to begin with, and then Jeff had a few revisions to Tim's plan. So that, that was the additional.
$7,000.
So Jim's actually asking that the village cover some of the additional $7,000 from the last time you saw this till tonight, which is, you're actually asking for a total of $12,000? I mean, I know you're asking for more than that, but that's what you're, you'd be willing to.
Yeah, 12. I mean, if, if we were originally at a third, and that was fine. This was not an increase that we had, we had pushed forward, but yeah, so it's a little less than a third of the seven, yeah.
So the bank of Cross Plains, though, is paying the $2,234?
Correct.
Besides that.
Correct.
That's the driveway, right?
That's for the driveway. Maybe I didn't mention that at the.
Yeah.
That's, they provided me at least a confirmation that they would.
Other thoughts, comments, questions from the post dues? We're pretty quiet tonight.
Balance would be paid by you, the $20,000 approximately?
Yeah, the rest would be.
Yeah. Well, it would be a little bit more than that because it would be the 20,000 plus two-thirds of the additional 7.
Twenty-five or so.
So I think the only question maybe remaining, we have a motion second for the amount of $10,000, and the question is, do we want to, anybody have thoughts about going to $12,000? Or we leave it where it is and vote to see what happens? Okay, so we will go ahead and vote. We have motion second that the village of Oregon contribute $10,000 toward additional storm water conveyance, piping and pertinences as part of the Thompson Drive construction. Payment is contingent upon full payment of any outstanding impact fees, developer fees, or any village fees owed by Lees Construction and/or Jim Lees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So that takes us back to item four. The village board made a journey in closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E to discuss the possible use of tax increment financing for a hotel on Tiff Number Four.
Go move.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Staiton?
Yes.
Fudrow?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Rethauer?
Yes.
Follig?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Thank you. And we'll go next.
Yeah, next.
Do we need to bring our binders?
Do we want this section on? Welcome back, everyone. We just spent some time in closed session, talking about tax increment financing for a hotel on Tiff Number Four. The board does have a plan coming out of that closed session, and staff will, will talk with the developers about that tomorrow, so they will know where we're headed. Item six is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in the amount of $543,824.2.
I'll make that move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions?
On the Don Miller Body Shop, I see squad 112 got repaired. Does anybody know any details about that? Can we ask the chief to report on that in a future meeting?
Sure. I believe it was, I think they had a, it was a fender bender at QuickTrip with one of the squads.
Okay, well.
But I can, I can find it.
It's just so unusual, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear more about it.
Yep.
And also, I'd also like to know if an insurance claim has been filed on that?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we always do that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, again, we have a motion second to approve vouchers in the amount of $543,824.2. Roll call, please.
Follig?
Yes.
Fudrow?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Rethauer?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Yes, that motion carries. Item seven is community input, chance of the public to address the board. Would anyone wish to address the board? Seeing none. We will go to item eight, which is proclamations and announcements. Item A is board comments. Any comments?
I have a comment, yeah. In the Oregon Observer, Donna Dish and Lynn Johnson and Marty Berman were all the ones that planted all the flowers, and I just wanted, there was a nice article about them, but I, I just think they did an excellent job and it, it looked so much prettier.
Thanks, Darlene. I actually cut the article out to bring, and I forgot it, so thanks for bringing that up. And perhaps we could put something on our website thanking them?
Sure.
Would that be all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, people comment how nice it is and how good a job they do. It takes a lot of time.
It is. It's just excellent.
Yeah. So thanks to them. I have one comment I'd make for people who are viewing for the board. Now also, I've had several people comment on the bike trail and saying they have some interest in forming an organization called Friends of the Oregon Rotary Bike Trail to help with support of that trail, not financially, but with anything they could do as far as taking care of it and publicizing and stuff like that. So if anybody watching who has interest in that, please contact me or staff so we can start to record some names on that. Anything else from board? Jerry?
Yes, I recently attended a fundraiser for the Water Tower down at Charlie's, formerly Mason's on Main. And it was, all the work was done by Randy Gly, Randy and Bill. And I want to thank them for their efforts on that. It was, it looked very successful.
I've made a commitment already, I think Charlie's is having a soft launch that same night, from five to seven.
I think that's a tw-.
That's the 21st.
I'm talking about the 28th, Jeff.
Well, there's a.
Another soft opening on the 28th?
Yeah, and it's got to do with the professional association that I'm, that I work adjacent to.
Okay. So can you make the, the 6:30 meeting, or you just can't make the 5:30, or you're going to have a?
6:30 I can make easy, 5:30 is a question mark, 5:45 easier still, 6 o'clock, you know, it's one of those deals where if I could go there from 5 until 5:30, quarter to 6.
Okay.
I'd be able to do both. But if, if the group here feels that we're going to meet at 5:30, and I'm the only one with a conflict, then I'll see if I can just cut out of there at 5:30 and be over here, 5:35, just across the street.
Okay.
I will not be here on the 28th.
Yeah, I'll be, okay.
If you're out of town.
Okay.
Well, then we can meet at 6 o'clock to 6:15, because when Steve's gone, things go faster.
That's, no.
That's twice tonight.
So what about if we had the meeting at, on the 26th, on a week from tonight, that special board meeting? I, I was just trying to, since you're coming here on the 28th, I was going to just double up on.
That 26th works.
I don't call weekly meetings special anymore, I just call them our weekly meetings.
You're catching on.
You're, you're already on my agenda for Monday straight through.
Thank, 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 Jeff.
It's always so.
Yeah, until April 2017.
I feel, I feel special thinking.
16, actually.
So next, when next Monday?
That's better.
Okay.
We're kind of in the habit of having Monday.
Yeah, I, I have to have an attorney come, that's why I, I'd have to see if the attorney's available, so I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out. So it looks like there's two, at least two with a conflict on the 28th.
So then we'll keep the joint board meeting at 6:30?
Yeah, that one, that one for sure we're having.
And, and we'll have the special meeting Monday, the 26th.
If, if I can, if I get the attorney to come.
Okay.
If not, then I'll have to, we'll have to figure something out.
You can always email me or call me or something.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Like I said, I can make a last minute adjustment if I need to.
Okay. But Steve, you're the really only one that can't make it that night, and.
On the 28th.
Yeah.
Just keep it that?
Yeah, I may end up just keeping that.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then I can talk to you about the issue then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll probably, yeah. And then Jeff, you're a few minutes late, that's not.
Oh, so it's going back on the 28th?
I think so, yeah.
You're killing me, man.
I know.
Let's just leave it that way.
Yeah, okay.
And that starts at 5:30?
Yeah. Like about, till like it's about 6:15, then we'll adjourn this meeting, Eric, and walk across.
But we can't talk about anything.
Yeah, you cannot talk as we walk to the senior center.
We'll have to notice him.
Oh yeah, we'll have to notice him. So, yeah, let's just keep it on that Wednesday, and then I can just give Stephen updates.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Number five?
Trick or treat, just keep, you know, 31st, eight, five to eight, and then just another reminder about the special board meeting with the planning commission at 6:30 on November 5th regarding the draft sign ordinance, so.
So at what point does the draft sign ordinance become the sign ordinance?
Well, we're taking our time. I mean, we're, we're trying to make sure that when, when it's adopted, that people can say that they weren't aware of it, they didn't have inputs, I mean, we're going to meet with the chamber again. Actually, Judy has been very helpful, or I think we're going to try setting up, we're going to have a, another chamber meeting, I think in December. A December, well, we think at December 10th, and then we may even have another one if it's required. I, I, we're just, we want people to feel comfortable before this goes into effect, so probably, it's probably going to be at least February before it gets adopted, something like that.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Mike. Anything else from staff? Over here. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item nine, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion possible action regarding 2015 budget amendment number three, which is from the October 12 budget meeting.
So, so the board approved the amendment when the chief was here, but Lisa and I felt that it needed to be done in this format for the record. So it's the very same amendment for item you approved, but this is just now the official budget amendment.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item B, discussion possible action regarding approving 2015 snow plowing policy. Any trustees who live on cul-de-sacs cannot discuss this?
Can I take care of my own street?
We, we actually showed up this year, Eric.
That's a red line.
Exactly, exactly.
Any comments here, Jeff? Pretty much standard.
Well, I, I thought when I was hired for this, I thought I could move my street up to first. I just learned though, that probably it just means I get more snow in my driveway than normal.
You learn.
But no, this is actually the same plan that you've seen in other years. We may make some modifications. It's something that's kind of been changed through the years, we may do a little more updating in the, in the years coming. The only change I'll, I'll be making is the, and I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this today, Candy, but the color map. We're going to have to find and resurrect the color map so we can, I think Gary Dish has it down at his office, but essentially, I think, I think honestly, our public works crew has done a very nice job. We've been challenged at some years where we had over the hundred and some odd inches of snow. Last two years have not been anything too major, but they seem to do a very, very nice job, just as a resident in, in the past years. This just outlines kind of the, obviously, the, the plan for it. If any residents obviously want to have a copy of it, we can provide a copy of it, and it kind of lets them know where things will be addressed. Obviously, the main arterials, first, areas that are served by police, fire, that type thing, obviously, are, are the priorities, and then getting down to the minor streets and cul-de-sacs, unfortunately, last. We are proposing some, some equipment purchase for 2016, which we'll talk about Wednesday night, and some of that will be used for the snow plowing, and that'll help our efforts there as well.
We, we always put this policy on the village website.
This, oh, we do, okay, good.
So people can look at it if they want to.
I know we don't really want to be thinking about snow right now, and snow removal, but I got one question.
Go ahead. And I'm, if, I hope I don't put you on the spot, I'm, but I know in the past, Mark has always done 50/50, salt and sand, when they do salting, I think. I just want to know, are you going to continue that philosophy for this next year, just to see how it goes, or are you more of a 100% salt guy, or don't you?
My, my doctor has me on a no-salt diet. No, we will be continuing, you know, I guess the, my philosophy so far is if it isn't broken, let's not try to fix it quite yet, you know, and I think that's been kind of how we'll, we'll be moving ahead. So for this year, what we've been doing in the last year, you know, we'll continue that. But those are the kind of things that Gary and I, he'll, he'll come to talk to me and, and say, well, you know, we need to talk about this, maybe we need to amend this, or, and so I'll be using a lot of his advice on that as well.
Okay. But that's a good question, because we started that practice when we had that one really bad winter.
Yeah, right.
And we got so worried, but that's, that's how we stretched the, the salt out.
Right, yeah.
And.
And plus, I think salt was very difficult to come by that winter, is why that started.
The problem is when you, is when, I know Jeff knows this, is when you put the sand down, then you got, end up cleaning it.
Right. Catch basins.
Yeah. Well, that's a good que- well, we'll ask Gary.
Which, you know, if you have to clean out catch basins, having a vector truck is a very important part of being able to do that.
And you're going to say that, so we walked up to bring that up.
Stay tuned for Wednesday night's presentation.
Say Jeff's recent skids for Wednesday night, so.
I knew you were going to say that.
Well, and there's other options besides sand versus salt versus combination sand-salt, right? There's a beet solution?
Yes, there's, there's, there's type of, there's certain type of chemicals, there's brining, has kind of been the popular pretreatment, if you will, on certain streets. We don't, we haven't, to my knowledge, done any brining in the past. On 14, I know that that's been done, I think, that would be the county who's doing that, or the state DOT is doing that.
On bridges, they do that a lot.
Yes. But we've, I think, kind of stuck with the tried and true salt.
But we'll ask Gary, that's a good, that's a good question, Eric, yeah.
And I would mention in support of what Jeff said about more equipment, one thing we often forget, and I'm sure residents do because they don't deal with it, but we've added a lot of miles of streets without adding equipment or personnel, and, and we're at the point now, it's beyond the tipping point, so.
Right, we have about 43 miles right now of streets, just within the village.
Yeah, I don't know where that was five or 10 years ago, but I'm sure it was quite a bit less with, what's been added, so we'll hear more on that Wednesday night. So we need a motion to approve this, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? A motion second to approve the 2015 snow plowing policy, which is on our website for people to see. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, reported committees. Item A, the special October 5th Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting, trustee Carpenter.
So the first item I'll make a motion for is adding a week of vacation for a total of four weeks to finance director's vacation schedule in order to be consistent with other department heads effective September 12, 2015.
Second.
Thank you. And the committee recommended approval three to zero on this, so.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
My only comment is, Candy, put me down as abstaining on this.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric, for taking care of that. So any question or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next item is I'll make a motion to approve a new release and background forms for non-law enforcement and law enforcement job applicants, and the committee also approved this three zero.
So moved.
Thank you. Actually, that's a second.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
If you're right.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the third motion I would make is to approve a task order for a not-to-exceed amount of $3,900 to study pedestrian safety at village intersections. We discussed this at the, the protection, or Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting, and there's a second, I'll talk about it a little bit more.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we had a list before us of, I think, four, five different intersections where we've had quite a few public complaints and concerns that pedestrians are in danger for crossing the street, and we thought instead of just starting to budget and putting up all sorts of flashing signs and things that alert pedestrians that, because each of these signs is between $10,000 and $12,000, that perhaps we should ask for a study to be done to make sure we are putting the right signs at the right intersections. And I think that, that came apart, part of that discussion, right, Jeff?
Exactly. If, if you, it's kind of one of those things, if you put up too much, or if you put them in the wrong location, they're either non-effective, or people just don't even pay attention to them, whereas if it's something, you know, and in certain situations, it may or may not be an effective or safe device, and that's what we're, some of the streets we're looking at are, the intersection that kind of we're mostly concerned with is Alpine Junction, Alpine Parkway. Um, but, uh, we've, I think, kind of stuck with the tried and true salt.
But we'll ask Gary, that's a good, that's a good question, Eric, yeah.
Yeah, and I would mention in support of what Jeff said about more equipment, uh, one thing we often forget, and I'm sure residents do because they don't deal with it, but we've added a lot of miles of streets without adding equipment or personnel, and, you know, we're at the point now, it's beyond the tipping point, so.
Right, we have about forty-three miles right now of streets, just within the village.
Yeah, I don't know where that was five or ten years ago, but I'm sure it was quite a bit less with, what's been added, so we'll hear more on that Wednesday night. So we need a motion to approve this, please?
It's all moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? A motion second to approve the two thousand fifteen snowplowing policy, which is on our website for people to see. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, reported committees, item A, the special October fifth Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting, trustee Carpenter.
Uh, so the first item I'll make a motion for, uh, is adding a week of vacation for a total of four weeks to finance director's vacation schedule in order to be consistent with other department heads effective September twelfth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Thank you. And the committee recommended approval three to zero on this, so.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Um, my only comment is Candy put me down as abstaining on this.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric, for taking care of that. So any question or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Uh, next item is I'll make a motion to approve a new release and background forms for non-law enforcement and law enforcement job applicants. And the committee also approved this three-zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, that's a second.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
If you're right.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the third motion I would make is, um, to approve a task order for a not-to-exceed amount of three thousand nine hundred dollars to study pedestrian safety at village intersections. Um, we discussed this at the, the protection, or Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting, and there's a second, I'll talk about it a little bit more.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so we had, um, a list before us of, I think, four, five different intersections where we've had quite a few public, um, complaints and, um, concerns that pedestrians are in danger for crossing the street. And we thought instead of just starting to budget and putting up all sorts of flashing signs and things that alert pedestrians that, because each of these signs is between ten and twelve thousand dollars.
Correct.
That perhaps we should ask for, um, a study to be done to make sure we are putting the right signs at the right intersections. And I think, um, that, that came apart, part of that discussion, right, Jeff?
Exactly. If, if you, it's kind of one of those things, if you put up too much, or if you put them in the wrong location, they're either non-effective, or people just don't even pay attention to them. Whereas if it's something, uh, you know, and in certain situations, it may or may not be an effective or safe device. And that's what we're, some of the streets we're looking at are, uh, the intersection that kind of we're mostly concerned with is Alpine Junction, Alpine, um.
Parkway.
Parkway and County Highway CC at the bank out there. Very, very wide intersection, and sometimes, well, we get, we're getting a lot of traffic darting around, cars that are stopping for pedestrians. So we really want to make sure that if we're recommending something out there, that it is the right application, um, for that.
Well, I wonder, um, how long, how long do you think it'll be before that requires a, a four-way intersection?
The determination for that would have to be, you know, what really forces those type of things are either a warrant analysis, which would either show that it is, um, an unsafe intersection, say a history of, of accidents or serious accidents, or even fatalities, or if it's a level of service situation where you're just not getting the traffic through and you're getting long queues and delays of traffic. I don't think the long delays and queues of traffic are there yet, um, with going north and south on, on Alpine Parkway there. So that's, you know, to be, to be determined in the future, but that's really what would trigger that. It can be something, I mean, if it's, if it's a locally funded, um, you know, we can always, we can always look at signaling something, uh, but then if you're, you're gonna be a different, under a different level of funding and everything like that, unless if, if it's, say, warranted under DOT, and you're able to maybe get some shared funding or something through it.
So this is good for me to think about because this is brand new for me, but when I think about that area, I think about the development that's already been approved, that's gonna bring a lot of families in, uh, right there on Alpine and Another Wood. And I think about the future expansion of the, of the school system, where they've already got land right there on Alpine. So, so how far, how far into the future do you look when making these kinds of decisions, um, before you decide it just makes sense to jump that initial hurdle and go straight to the four-way intersection?
Um, it's a great question, and it's kind of that crystal ball type of, you know, thing. My experience with intersections that, that I was responsible with and in charge of, um, we looked at it, we were having a level of service, you know, basically a level of service F, you know, for that intersection, long delays, long backups, but then also significant traffic accidents and fatalities. That was what kind of forced the issue, if you, you know, if you will, there. Um, if it's deemed as a safety risk, that's, you know, not, people aren't stopping, or people are, you know, swerving around other cars, using turn lanes to go around other people, um, that can either be then dealt with, with additional patrols, or then you start looking at the fact of just it has to be signalized. So, I, you know, I wish I could give you a timeline on that, but, uh, it really is gonna depend on, on traffic volumes out there, you know, as things, as things continue to develop out there. I mean, we've seen a lot of development out there, but I don't hear too many people complaining about, you know, not being able to get across the highway there yet, but I'm sure we will.
And if I remember correctly, doesn't the county actually control when a light goes in on a county road?
It, it.
We can make requests, I think, but.
It does unless that we, we take the road over.
Yeah.
Right.
That's true.
I mean, actually, this was the intersection that made us think about doing this study because Jeff raised a great point that you don't want to put up lights and then, well, was that, that was, there were the wrong lights to begin with, or two years later, now you're putting signals up, so hopefully the gentleman from Strand will guide us in the right direction on this.
Couple of these locations also are at or near, um, schools, you know, we're looking at, and the school district has at least in concept agreed to maybe look at, um, some cost sharing with some of those installations, not, not some that are far away from the schools, but, um, you know, it's something we would discuss with them once we get this letter report back and kind of see what it's, see what it tells us.
Yeah.
There's another spot that I think of too, and I'm sorry that, that I don't have it memorized, I'm looking at these maps all around me of the Village of Oregon, but it's the, I think it's South Park, um, coming across one thirty-eight? Is that what we're gonna be extending?
So, so we didn't, we didn't, I was gonna say, maybe we should read for people watching this, the intersections we're gonna do, should we do that?
Yeah. I didn't, I couldn't find that, is that?
It's on the, the second last page. So Jeff, we decided not to do Park Street and Janesville because we're thinking that that's probably gonna be the, the next intersection, that we're gonna actually have to do a full-fledged intersection study to either decide to be putting it around a bounty, or exit, or exit mill in the next couple of years. So at this point, we're not doing it in, in this task.
Chief, if I, if you want to read those, please?
So, um, this up to thirty-nine hundred dollars task order would visit up to five pedestrian roadway crossings in the village to evaluate the potential use of signage. These intersections include, uh, one Alpine Parkway and County Highway CC, two Ash Street and County Highway CC, three Oak Street and Janesville Street, four South Prairie Parkway and Janesville Street, and five South Prairie Parkway at Room Corner School.
Thank you. So further discussion here? A comment I'd like to make, uh, and I think it's a great idea. Uh, my daughter's family lives in Portland, Maine, they have the same law we do on yield to pedestrians, and they don't have lights, they have pedestrian crosswalks, and lo and behold, people stop. And I, I think, we're just out there, and I think that ninety percent of the time, oncoming vehicles stop for pedestrians, and it's gotta be an enforcement issue. So I would encourage, uh, maybe at some point in time, talk, we should talk to Chief Yule about this, the public safety, and if he has, knows of a plan that works to help cause that to happen. I mean, it's different across the entire state, in Maine and Wisconsin, so it's not like, uh, everybody's gonna stop in Oregon, but if there's things that could happen, uh, I think it would be good to take a look at that, too. It really makes for a nice flow, and, and I think a respectful interaction of different types of, uh, the way people get around when you.
What's the difference? I'm not familiar with the concept, you said crosswalk?
Uh, it's painted crosswalk, I mean, I've been probably up to six feet from the cross, crosswalk and half cars stopped.
And so it's just striped these on the roadway?
Yeah, just like we have just the white stripes is all.
Just the mentality when you go different places.
Yeah. And even intersections where there's nothing painted, they still stop.
Yeah.
And ninety percent of the time, I kept track last time I was there, nothing painted at the intersection at all, and the cars will stop and let you go through. That's very nice, the safety, safer pedestrians, just a, I think, just a nice respectful way of doing transportation works well.
I have a question, why did they change it to green flags?
The green flag question?
Your green mean, means go.
Green, yes, I, you know, I never even crossed my mind until someone said the exact same thing.
Somebody said it to me the other day.
A couple of weeks ago, because there was a question, a lot of this is kind of came, uh, has come about through a couple concerned residents, um, their kids going back and forth to school across some of these intersections. Um, also, it was brought to our attention by Chief Yule about a couple of locations that we're, we're taking a look at. And throughout all of this, one of the residents said, why, why green? Doesn't green mean go? And Judy is not here to, to, uh, respond to that. I'm trying to remember, apparently it was a decision made several years ago, because the flags are actually put up, um, by the Safe, Oregon's, is it Oregon Safe Kids Coalition?
Wellness Coalition.
Wellness Coalition, thank you, that's what it is. And, um, there was a decision made by them to use the green color. I, I look at it as just a high-visibility flagging, but yeah, you're right, it's a, um, it can be confusing, um, at times and everything.
But one thing's for sure, is that green doesn't mean go if it's moving.
Correct.
It's only when the green is standing still.
It's not a moving target.
You mean, they're moving across the road?
Yeah, that's the first indication that it probably doesn't mean go.
Is that green, are those flags reflective?
Um, they're not reflective, it's just a high-visibility, kind of yellow-green is what it really is.
In fact, all towns have them now, green, throughout Wisconsin.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, I think people have been hit carrying those flags.
Yeah.
People just not paying attention when they're driving, not respecting pedestrians.
Well, they're magic flags, too.
Huh?
They're magic flags.
I'm sorry.
If you hold one in your hand, you won't get hit.
Well, that's true, yeah, so you don't have to look.
Right.
Yeah.
I would agree, it, it is a mindset, and it's something I think that we can, it starts, it starts here, and it starts with people actually almost obnoxiously stopping, you know, to let people across and making sure that they cross. I, I had an instance the other day where I was trying to let someone cross on Janesville Street, and, uh, you know, I've, the, the, a young lady on a bike started to come out, and there was someone gonna come around me on the side, and, uh, you know, I turned on my lights, on my, my warning lights, and kind of pulled over, 'cause, you know, you, you don't want someone to get hit like that. And, uh, it, it just, it infuriates you because it's, does, what, it takes a few more seconds to get to your destination, and the risk that you're having with the kids and everyone, the pedestrians, it's just not worth it. So it is a mindset, we need to encourage those to, to, we can be a pedestrian-friendly community.
Yeah, I think so, too. Good, thanks. Anything else? So we have motion second to approve a task order for not to exceed amount of thirty-nine hundred dollars to study pedestrian safety at village intersections. All in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At eleven minutes, not requiring action, there is none, twelve unfinished business, there is none, thirteen new business, is approval of pending new operator licenses. This has been approved by the police department at the Stop and Go Kayla Wagnons. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fourteen lists of future agenda items coming our way, and fifteen takes us to our joint meeting with the Cable TV Committee. So we wait five minutes on that, or are more coming, Kermit, do you know?
Kermit's just gonna do it.
Okay, so we can go ahead.
We're ready.
Okay.
Keep her going.
So there'll be no roll call. So item seventeen is, do you want to come to the mic, please? Seventeen, there's discussion possible approval, regarding two thousand sixteen cable TV budget, and that's pages seventy-two through seventy-two D. So I'd welcome Kermit Traska from the Cable TV Committee to give us a little update, and then we'll go from there.
So I have a quick question.
Yeah.
This is the first time that I've interacted in this process, and I am, I'm, I'm the board's representative to the Oregon Cable TV Committee, so what role do I play in this process right now?
Well, typically Kermit comes and he, he does, um, an overview of what he's presenting on behalf of the cable board, and then the village board approves it. That's about it, really. Pretty, pretty simple.
Any comments you'd want?
Yeah, if you want to add some comments, Jeff, if you'd like.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Well, we're having a lot of changes, uh, in the years that I've presented this, I think this is my third time for making this presentation. The Oregon Cable continues to do the work that it has done since, I believe, about nineteen-eighty-four, and Liz Harlow has been around all of that time. Uh, she had a knee replaced, not here today, but, uh, she asked if she had to come tonight after working this afternoon, and said, no, uh, I could take it this year. That being said, the major activities include the, uh, filming and, uh, presentation, carrying live online, the village board meeting, the school board meetings, uh, many of the activities within the Village of Oregon, the library, the senior center, uh, community band concerts, and then at the schools, um, many of the high school athletic contests, and virtually all of the music concerts at all of the schools, elementary schools and, uh, middle school and high school. Those have been the major activities. We did begin a process a year ago of some underwriting, uh, we, um, weren't real successful at that, uh, probably because of, uh, we weren't real forceful in our marketing, people picking up on what we were doing. Oregon Community Bank, very supportive, as well as Torhorst Insurance. And then, uh, Stoughton Hospital, we do a considerable amount of filming, uh, for them on an head-needed basis, and, uh, continuing to look for more. Changes in the upcoming year, Liz Harlow is going to step back, uh, do some of the work, the office work that she has done so well over the past years, um, scanning the newspaper, keeping her ear to the ground in the village, what's happening, so that we can have somebody there to record it. And then, um, doing some of the scheduling. So over the next few months, we will be looking for a new, well, let's say, a coordinator, administrator to take over some of the leadership roles, uh, that we have, uh, at OCA Media. In terms of the budget, uh, not much has changed there. We expect to do this, about the same amount of work as we have been doing, uh, within the available funds that we do have. The two thousand fifteen allocation from the village was a hundred and twelve thousand. Uh, I'm talking with Lisa at the village, it's anticipated a hundred and twelve thousand for two thousand sixteen as well. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Kermit?
Yeah.
Thanks, Kermit, I'm gonna ask for motion second first week.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, yeah, just a quick question, Kermit, the change in health benefits, is that due to Liz's change in?
Yeah, they had a family plan, and with Liz and reducing the number of hours that she would have, uh, it wouldn't be viable for us to carry a family plan anymore, but would be, uh, Liz's health insurance.
Okay, thanks, Kermit. I, I just want to point out for the public that the hundred and twelve thousand dollars that Kermit has listed as Village of Oregon contribution to their income is really the cable TV fees that we get from, uh, cable TV companies, so, um, the village taxpayers don't pay that.
Correct.
Unless they have cable TV, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Can you estimate the size of the viewership approximately?
No, we can't. We would hope that everybody who has Charter Cable at some time or other would click into us. When they put us up in the high nine hundreds, you don't go clicking past there. In the past, if you had, like, through the teens and twenties and thirties, you might have caught us somewhere in there. Now, you pretty much have to want to know who we are, uh, what channels we have in order to go there. We do get anecdotal evidence as we go about town. I would say a, a good deal at the senior center, uh, number of people who say they catch programs on that, and other community members, whether we're out at a restaurant or just on the street, they'll stop and say they caught us on, uh, Oregon Cable. So in terms of actual numbers, no.
Kermit, would you just tell the viewing public what station they can find you on?
It's, uh, Charter Cable nine eighty-three and nine eighty-four. Uh, one is primarily the school channel, and the other, the village channel, so all of the, uh, school activities can be found on one, and the, uh, community, uh, senior center, library, uh, the parade, and so forth, on the community channel.
Any other, Jenny?
I just had a question, um, are the school board meetings done live, or is there issues with the cables or something there? I have folks that tell me they can't see the school board meetings.
The, uh, school board has broadcasting equipment similar to the village hall, and for putting the information back out onto the cable system. Uh, something changed within their system, and their system no longer speaks to our system to do it live. We're working on that, trying to resolve the issue, and who would pay for the expensive piece of equipment to make that work? And that came up, uh, Matt Hill had been working with us at the high school, Matt had worked for OCA for many years, and then had the Performing Arts Center and the video taping, uh, responsibilities in the school district. Uh, Matt left in April, and after he left, uh, things no longer worked. So we, we are working with, um, officials at the school, but we haven't been able to match it up yet.
Any other questions or comments for Kermit? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion second to approve the two thousand sixteen cable TV budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Kermit.
Thank you.
And give Liz our thank you also.
Yeah.
Have a piece of cake before you go.
That takes us to item nineteen, uh, pages sixty through sixty-B, which is the senior center budget, which is before us for discussion, possible approval.
And so Steve, I was gonna ask Lisa just to explain this sheet in your, on page sixty, the goldenrod sheet, right, Candy?
Yes, it's gold.
Before we start talking.
Yeah.
So, the senior center, as you know, we have, um, our new senior center agreement, and two thousand sixteen is the last year of our agreement. So what you see before you is the expenditures and the revenues that are received for the, for the senior center, and then how much is funded by the municipal, um, entities that are involved with the senior center. So for instance, for two thousand sixteen, the expenditure budget is budgeted for four hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. Outside, outside revenues, um, including the, um, the state grant, is that what it is, state?
County grant.
Dane County. The Dane County. So there's, that includes the money from Dane County for case management, nutrition, and, um, the Adult Day program, and then the administrative revenue that you see, fifteen thousand dollars of that is the contribution from the Town of Dunn. And then that brings us to, um, the total amounts that need to be covered by the municipal entities that are involved with that. And then it's just broke down based on the, um, formula and the agreement, based on the fixed costs, the case management, and the outreach usage, and population is part of the formula also. So then you see, um, the two thousand sixteen total, as it's broken down by community, um, the portion that, for the Village of Oregon, for instance, is the two hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety dollars, which is about, over sixty-five percent of the, um, the funding for the municipal, um, entities. And then the rest of, um, fall online based on their usage and their population. I don't know if anybody's ever looked over or read the senior center agreement, but...
And the key is that next week when we meet with the, with the towns in Brooklyn, um, if, if, if the budget goes up more than seven percent, right? That, then everyone has to vote on it and approve it, so that's what we'll be voting on next Wednesday, next Wednesday, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Is the, is the Town of Dunn, is that, is that for sure? Have they voted on that, or is this preliminary that they're joining back in?
They, no, not at all.
Well, they're not joining in, they've just been.
As their donation.
They've been making an annual donation since they, um, pulled out of the agreement a few years ago.
If they were part of it, they'd be paying more, like, thirty thousand.
Okay.
But I know for a fact that it will get at least fifteen thousand in twenty sixteen. I've been playing phone tag with Kathy, but I know at least we're gonna get that.
This is not the first year this has happened, though, is it? The fifty, the flat amount?
No, this is, this is the second.
Third or fourth.
This would be the third year.
What was, can you refresh my memory? What was the logic behind them saying this is all we're gonna pay?
Well, they, they wanted to go to this setup where, where, you know, there's a formula based on use, and, um, so they, they were paying about thirty-three thousand dollars at that point, and, um, so they pulled out and they, they're getting their service through McFarland, and Ellison worked with Kathy, Kathy's the town clerk, and we were able to get at least fifteen thousand dollars as a donation from the last two years, and it looks like we'll get it in twenty sixteen. So at some point, will they come back to the village, you know, center? It's possible, because this is, this is the arrangement they wanted, that, you know, there was a, um, a formula that included use of the center, so.
So they still make use of the services?
Well, they, they don't do, they don't get, I should be answering, Ellison should be answering this.
They make use of every service, except they cannot do case management. But that's easier said than done. It's on paper, they have to go to McFarland, but they go without them to go to McFarland. They just suffer alone. Or they come in. Or they come in and say, "I have a quick question," and then an hour later, they're still helping them.
Still there.
Because that's what we do. So I, I really want them back as a part of the pro, the formula, or a part of the whole contract. I really want them back, but...
Have you talked with Kathy about that? About that coming back?
Yes. And I think part of the problem is they promised McFarland they wouldn't throw them some crumbs for a few years, you know, two, three years, and then change it all. But I think McFarland's in a transition right now. The director left, there's an interim director. They gave a few hours to one of the case managers, and I think it's, they're in a situation where it's perfect timing with this contract ending in 2016 that I can work on talking to Kathy and Ed and the rest of the board there.
Okay.
I think it'd just be a much, primarily for the seniors.
Yeah.
But...
Right. Was, was this a, Ellison, was this a cost-saving measure back three years ago? I don't recall. Do you recall?
On their part?
On their part, yeah.
Not necessarily. I think it was a lot of miscommunication, a lot of anger, that they felt they gave us enough notice, that they, they didn't like the way we were formulating things. They wanted it to be more like Stoughton Senior Center, based on usage. And then ironically, we get my Senior Center computing system that does just that. And I thought that would make Ed happy. And I think he's, he likes what we're doing now, and I think, I think he may.
But it, you know, we warned them that it took us a while to get this agreement, that, this complicated agreement that only Lisa understands. I mean, it took us a while. I mean, and I always say thank God for Delbesky, because I'm not sure we would have figured it out, so.
Yeah.
And I, and I think I've mentioned it, you know, to Kathy a few times, you know, I apologize it, but it, I knew it was going to take a long time. When you, when you have three or four communities coming together to do an agreement, it usually takes about a year, to be honest with you, which took us a little bit longer, so.
Good luck with your effort to get them back in, in the Senior Center. Is it really your birthday today?
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like us to sing to you?
No.
That's good, I was hoping you wouldn't.
Yeah, everybody'd be turning their TV off.
So I have a question, and it's a bit of a, it's a bit of an odd question, and I apologize if I'm putting anybody on the spot, I just don't know how else to ask it. What percentage of the overall budget is administration?
You, you mean of the, of the fort, for 20?
Right, relative to the amount of dollars that are, that are given to the Senior Center for programs and administration, what percentage of those dollars actually go to programs versus administration? And the reason I'm asking the question is, is if we're going to increase the budget over 12%, I'd like, I'd like to know that the lion's share that increase is going to programming, not administration.
What, what do you mean by programming?
Programming for the seniors. Programming being the mission of the Senior Center to provide for, for the, for the...
As opposed to the director and assistant directors' salaries, or as opposed to all staff salaries?
So, yeah, there's a lot that goes into administration. I would say, you know, I would say probably the salaries is part of it. I'd say the indirect, in terms of the benefits, is part of it. I'd say overhead, postage, rent, heat, electric, all of that, I think, is part of, in my mind, is part of administration.
The, the main, the main reason that, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong here, the main reason that it's going up is that we had a, a new employee come in and take family health insurance. So that's, that's $10,000, $10,100 of the increases just for family health insurance, so.
That's what did it.
Yeah, so that's your, and, and then you just reclassified somebody, so that's kind of a combination, so that is, but you need people to work there to do the, run the center.
The big chunk too, Mike, is the building itself and the heat, the electricity, the furnaces that might break. Programming itself, we, the council pays for.
Who's the council?
The Council on Aging, our non, 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity that was created about the same time the Senior Center started, 35 years ago.
So I mean...
And that's why we fund raises, to provide services and programming for the seniors.
It may actually be easier to, Jeff, to go through these pages that we have listed here, and we can kind of go through and say, you know, this is pro, you know, what the, if you look at the Senior Center, this is, this is what, this is the staff, and this is, this is what pays to run the, run the facility, to run the center, the Senior Center budget. This is personnel, health insurance. This is the, the fee that we pay to, Ellison was mentioning, the my Senior Center, the computer program that keeps track of the use of the center. Mileage and training and office supplies that the employees use to keep the center running. Page 54, that's the meal site.
54?
Page 54, yeah. Yeah, going backwards here.
So, yeah, I don't want to draw this out.
Well, no, I mean, but it, but it actually, we got to go through these pages anyway, so, I mean, and, you know, that, that's all you have to do, you sort of got to go through and, you know, the meal site, and I don't know, would you consider that programming, you know, providing meals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just, I think to myself, I think to myself that I have more questions than I do answers with regard to this, but, but I think about the Senior Center like I think about a nonprofit organization, and I know that's not correct, because it's not how it's built, per se. It's, it's a, it's a public service that the Village provides to its residents, to some extent. But a nonprofit would try to keep its, its administration to, to program expenses somewhere in the 15% range. If they were, if they were around 20%, that'd be a high number. And just looking high level...
Including, including, do they own the building?
Well, yes. If they decided to own a building and, and they had decided to pay a mortgage and there was no way of recovering that through rents or...
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be in there as well. And I think that, to some extent, that's what causes nonprofits to do capital campaign raises, but that's not an option for the Village, because we're not a nonprofit. And there's kind of where the line separating what we do versus what a nonprofit does, is.
Yeah, because we almost spend $70,000 a year just on the building. That's what's, I mean, I was saying, include the building or not, it's, it's a pretty big part of the, you know, expense.
Yeah. So how do you know what the right mix is for personnel at the Senior Center in terms of, like, from a, from a private perspective? We would call that FTE, Full Time Equivalent, and, and we would try to make sure that we're maximizing the numbers of full-time equivalents that we allocate to revenue. And I know, again, it's not apples to apples, but how do you go through that at the Village level?
Well, when the Town of Dunn pulled out, we, we did reduce hours over there. We, we had to do that. I mean, Ellison went through a pretty big budget cut. I mean, we lost, you know, initially $33,000, so we had to do something, you know. Some of that came back with their donation. So I think we, we cut, was it the case managers that we cut?
Well, we kind of had a changing of the guard at that time, because Sue really was leaving at 40 hours, and we got Rachel in at 30.
At 30, that's right.
And then Carolyn retired at, at 40, and then we dropped Carol down to 30. Now they're slowly building back up. I think it was a year ago.
It actually was July, we went to 32 for both of them, yeah.
And if it comes to it, they're, they're both willing to go back to 30, but I don't want to see that happen. Whereas going backwards, they're on overload now. They should be full-time positions. They're both content at 32 at this time. But as more and more people age in place, it's just going to get a heavier load for them, so I think the future holds, full-time, the next, you know, three, four years, they need to be full-time.
So I think overall, I think, I mean, if Ellison's, Ellison loved that more staff, right?
Absolutely. I'd love to have the Adult Day Program, a full-time program.
Yeah, yeah.
But...
In, in some respects, it's a little unfair to Ellison, because that's why I said in my, in my, I tried to say in my overview, I mean, not to pick on this, this $10,000 increase in family health insurance, but Ellison has such a small, tight budget that all of a sudden, when you do add somebody taking family health insurance, it just, the percentage goes up, and, and so that's why, I, that's why, you know, but technically per the agreement, we had, all, everyone has to approve it, because it's over 7%, and that's what we have to do next week. And it's up, if the communities want us to try to get back down to 7%, we'd have to figure some way of doing it, that, keeping the increase at 7%.
So did, did you get your question answered, or not, Jeffrey? Create more questions?
No.
You okay?
You did a good job answering my question. Thank you both.
Sure.
Good, thanks. Okay, so we still need a motion on the Senior Center budget, I think.
Are we going to go through it, or?
Yeah, we're going to go through that first.
And you could, you know, Steve, you could do a couple of things. You could approve the Senior Center budget, and then do the reclass by itself, or however you want to do it.
Yeah, I thought we'd take, start, go down to B and do...
Yeah.
B through F, and we'll come back to A when that's done.
Okay.
Okay, is that all right?
Just like...
Okay. So we're going to page 54 of the meal site. And any questions, anybody has or comments, any comments Ellison wants to make would be fine.
Well, you can see the big jump under health insurance, and that's what Lisa was referring to. That the note, the person that we hired in August is taking family health, so that's, that's the impact we're feeling with this budget.
Okay. So items C, outreach?
But for the most part, Steve, I want to mention...
Yeah, go ahead.
For the most part, when you look at the full budget, approximately $19,000 is covered by the Dane County Grant. Older American Act money, federal money trickles down, and so that helps that area quite a bit, the nutrition area.
Sure, thanks.
Sure.
Can you talk to the, the salaries operations increase? So, so the, if you look at that line, General Ledger 1054920, the line 113, salaries operations, you see that year-to-date, the budget is 16...
Oh, why it's gone up?
Well, two things. So the budget is 16, but the actual is 10, and part of that might just be where we are in the year.
Yeah. That's the actual year-to-date.
And then why?
The 10 is the actual year-to-date, so we're not to the end of the year, so that's why it's not up to the 16 yet.
Right, and that's effective, and that's effective September?
Yeah, up through the end of September.
So we're on pace to get to 16?
Yes.
And so then why the increase to 18, 5?
Well, I think part of that, Lisa, you're the expert at this.
Well, that's because you increased the hours of the person that you hired.
Yeah, and she started in August. She didn't start in January, she started in August.
Right, but he's talking about the increase for 16?
To 18.
Yeah, so the person...
For 218 for 2016, from 2015.
It's more hours and higher pay.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Well, not necessarily. I don't know if it was a higher pay than the past nutrition manager, so much as there's more hours. She had to go to 24 hours, and I didn't even realize this, in order to get health insurance. That was another new Wisconsin rule. And our nutrition manager had always been 21, but we had to give her three extra hours in order to get her health insurance.
So was this, and again, not to get too deep in the weeds, but, and if I am, let me know, was this a decision that we had to make because of a contract of some sort, or was this a decision that we decided to make because it was the right thing to do for the employee, or how did that go?
B.
Okay.
B. There's no contract.
Okay. And then my next question is line 193, workers' compensation. Do you know what's causing the increase there? I know it's only a couple hundred dollars, but percentage-wise, it's significant.
It's the rate that we're given. I believe that it went up from, well, there's higher, there's an increase in the salary area. Workers' comp is based directly on the salary, and then there's a, there's the rate, and it depends on what class you fall into, like clerical is really inexpensive, public works and public safety are probably higher. So every year, there's an adjustment. I think it comes from, must come from the state. And so that's just what it calculates out to be.
It's, it's a reflection, too, if we're having workers' comp claims, too.
Right, because it's based on a three-year average.
Not just, not just in the Senior Center, but for the Village.
Right.
Oh, and then that gets spread out over all the departments.
Yeah.
Could I ask a related question? Page 54 is, the title of the budget page is Meal Site, which would imply that there'd be food in some respect, in some way. But I don't see a food line item, which, which means that it's from another source, the funding is from another source?
Well, the food all comes from consolidated foods in Verona, and it's something separate through Dane County. We, we don't, you, you're never going to see a line item for food. Dane County totally covers it. Our donations come back to the Village, the Village mails them back to Dane County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. Where's, where's the food budget? That answers that. Other questions on the Meal Site budget on page 54? You see, now we'll go to outreach at the Senior Center, page 55. Questions or comments from trustees, or any comments from Ellison? Seeing none, we will go to Adult Day Program, page 56. Questions or comments from trustees, or any comments from Ellison? Seeing none, we will go to Senior Center Building, page 61. Any questions or comments there from trustees? Any comments from Ellison? Seeing none, we'll go to Senior Center Donations, page 74.
This is going to be...
If we can just back up really quick to Operations, page 61.
Yep.
I see that the percent change is 60% under other contracted services, line item 290. I just don't see where that, is that the $1,000 difference between the 2016 and the 2015 That would be about right.
Yeah, it's, what, the percentage change in the last column is comparing the 15 budget to the 16 proposed budget.
And do we know why the year-to-date actual is so much over the budget? Part of it might be that the budget was, was an underestimate. It looks like 14 was a little bit closer to where we are in 15, but...
I don't know.
Ellison, remember what that, what that's for?
Um...
I got my notes upstairs.
Was it the door we had to replace? I don't know, there's always something that breaks over there. I have to think about this.
We, we can get the answer for you, Jerry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else on that, or page 74, Senior Center Donations? Okay, so that takes us through items B through F, the Senior Center budget. So we need a motion and second for approval, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? So we've motioned second to approve the Senior Center budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Takes us back to 19A from the special October 5 Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting, and the committee recommended this, 3 to nothing. You want to go ahead with this, Jeannie?
Sure. I was going to find that. Because we have a handout for this, right?
It's, it's, it's after page 60.
Oh, it's after page 60?
So, Jeannie, if you're going to, if you're going to put this motion on the floor, the only thing I would ask you to do is, when we were talking about this, we probably, if you are going to do that, we probably want to do is make sure that if, if this position's going to get reclassified, that we also give her the cost across the board adjustments in, on January 1st. So that's, it's clear in the motion, if you, if you want to, if you feel like doing that.
Okay. I can't... Okay, so I, so I'll make the motion to reclassify Senior Center Assistant to the Director to Senior Center Assistant Director position effective January 1st, 16. And do you want me to add the, add...
So, so we'd be consistent, we'd do other... So, so we'd be consistent, we'd do other reclass that they also get the January first, uh, mark, uh, cross-the-board adjustment.
Yeah, so that we include that, include that adjustment. So there's a second we can talk about it. Um, so at the meeting, Allison talked a little bit about this and you want, if you want to, you can again, but it sounds like we're really reclassifying this position to what, to match what the person is already doing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Jeanie. Are there questions or comments or anything more from Allison on this?
Well, my, my only comment, comment would be that, that again, we're putting more money towards salaries, um, on a budget that's increasing year-over-year significantly, twelve percent. And I'm concerned that that that's the best place to put the village's money. Not, not concerned enough that I question your judgment. I trust your judgment. But when I see that salaries are going up, not programming, and then budget increases are being requested, to me, that's an uneven equation. So maybe if I understood better along the way as the year went on, what we were doing to manage, um, the, the FTE, the staff-to-services equation and what our goals were, maybe I wouldn't have as many questions now. It just seems like a lot coming to me right now that where the, where the increase is going in the wrong direction. Well, I'd expect the increase to be going to providing more services for the seniors, but maybe that's exactly what this increase in salaries does. I don't know.
Yeah. I, I think the, the best way to look at it or to get a good handle is Allison does a really nice annual report, which really talks about all the programming and services that the center provides. That'd be the first thing I would refer you to, Jeff. And I think we, we handed out a couple per.
Yeah, I'll make sure I have some available at the meeting next Wednesday. And also, um, Ann put together a video, um, about what we do at the seniors. So we're gonna be showing that too.
And the second thing is we, we, we talked about this back in thirteen, fourteen is we had to take the budget sold back because of when the, not to pick on the town of Dumb, but when they pulled out and, you know. And, and so we're sort of gradually now getting the budget back up to where it, it probably should be closer to, like, to get the center to run. So yeah, I, I know it appears that two of the things that are happening here is we're adding somebody on health insurance or giving somebody family health insurance and doing reclass, but that's what we're doing, proposing to do in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, and, and that's part of it, the, the health insurance, part of it is, is it probably increased the workers' compensation a little bit because she's going up in hours. Part of it is she's going up in hours, so that's gonna go to salaries. And now this request, um, this is a thirty percent increase in salary over two years. That's, that's significant. The whole, the, the whole dollar isn't as significant as the percentage, which I think is the running theme here.
Yeah.
And maybe because the salary is small-ish relative to overall salaries, um, thirty percent is the exact right number. I, I, I trust personnel and I trust Allison and you to know what that is. It's just a lot coming at the same time where we're trying to be fiscally responsible.
We'd have been facing this whenever, whenever the, whenever we do the salaries survey, you know, we're gonna start doing it next year, we'd be facing, doing something with this position at that time anyways, as Allison kind of shows you that it's, and we knew was, if you do the reclass, you're gonna be underneath the market. So at, at some point, we're gonna, at the board or the, you have to be facing to do with this position. And so I've actually, I think Allison has brought this forward, well, brought this over two or three years and I, I said I just didn't feel comfortable doing it because we were trying to, when somebody pulls out of the center, we were having a hard time balancing the center's budget. And again, you know, we're trying to get the center's budget and operations back to where it was before the town of Dumb, you know, decided to leave, so.
It does look like everything's happening here months.
Yep.
Well, I, I, sometimes it does.
It does, and that's just the way life is, but, um, I don't think people remember, you don't remember that for two years we had someone who was getting, getting no benefits with nutrition.
Right.
People don't remember for the first ten years I was here, I took no health insurance. I mean, you don't remember how much money you save. And municipalities don't always remember that either, but then when this happens, she's still getting, you know, this, my staffer woefully underpaid and I just, she's still not gonna be up to par with some of the other assistants in Dane County. I just want, I want my staff to get paid what they're worth and we'll see what happens.
Good.
Allison, I have a question. Would most staff be involved with program even when they're listed as admin? Are there people that just simply do number crunching, for example, or does everybody have program responsibilities?
You need to come and spend a day at the seniors.
Well, I have, with, uh, you and Rachel.
Yeah, well, like participate in the activities and what's happening in the programming and services.
You'll be there soon enough, Doug.
But it's, no, I, I don't sit in my office with the door shut. Um, if, if Rachel and Carol are at a meeting, they're out visiting clients, somebody comes in, they want, um, loan, loan equipment from the loan closet, I'm back, they're pulling that out for them. Um, somebody needs a, a ride and they can't get ahold of the dispatch. I mean, there's always, it's always hands-on.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah.
You call them admin, administrative employees or administrative work, but it's really program.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
When you have, when you have a small staff, everyone has to.
Everyone's cross-trained to do everything.
Right, so the figure of admin costs may be a little bit misleading since some of that must be allocated to programming as well.
Yeah, yeah, it, it crosses, you're right. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, so you're saying all staff provide services, even though they're administrative, they're still doing services?
Absolutely.
Sure, okay. Yeah, I think that's a good point.
I've got just a comment. Um, I know this person and since it's a personnel issue with raises, that kind of thing, I'm also just gonna abstain from voting. I know it's a far.
No, that's, that makes sense. It's a safe thing to do here. I agree.
It's the same dollar.
Yep.
Thanks, very. Any further question or comments on this item? So we have a motion to reclassify the senior center assistant to the director to senior center assistant director position effective one one sixteen with the increases at that time.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abolish, motion carries. Thank you. So I think we got the senior center wrapped up.
Yep.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Perfect place to be.
Do you often spend your birthday at the village board meetings?
Yeah.
Look, I set that up more often for you.
Sorry.
Okay, so we're on, uh, the library budget, uh, pages fifty-eight through fifty-eight F, plus fifty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, and one fifteen, so.
So Lisa and I attended the library board meeting last week, made a good. Right, our, our long discussion with the library board was, was really interesting and they asked us some questions they're gonna respond to, hopefully this week, yeah, maybe next week.
So Susan, you wanna kind of get us going here and give us your overview?
Did you, I think you all saw the library accomplishments in two thousand fifteen. I'd just like the senior center, we are very busy. Um, we had, um, I have a door counter, accounts people coming into the building and we had nineteen thousand people through the building in September. Um, we are really ramping up our programming. We're doing a lot of programming. Um, we are doing a wonderful music series this fall. Um, we've already, you missed the harpist, he was absolutely fabulous. We have a, uh, a gentleman from Oahuka doing, um, um, mini polkas tomorrow night, if you're interested in mini polkas. We'll have a little bit of a, an open carpet for the dance floor, but, um, he should be lots of fun. So we have a lot of things going on and then in, um, next month, we have a wonderful old folk singer coming and then December, we have a gentleman who sings songs of the Great Lakes. So we are really trying to focus our programming outreach, um, not only in the building, but also outside the building. We have, uh, two adult book clubs, um, Kelly visits the daycare centers. We are, um, offering computer classes in the evening for people to come in and if they need, uh, to figure out how to use that mouse or, you know, turn a computer on, then we can help them with that. So we are really busy and we're trying to extend all the way into the community. We have, uh, a staff member on the Wellness Coalition Committee. Uh, we go to the chamber meetings and so we're trying to make ourselves, um, let's see, what's, what's a good word? Invali- valuable to the entire community in some way or another, so. The budget is pretty straightforward this year. Um, Mike and Lisa had asked for a zero increase, so we have, um, done that, I believe. Um, so there weren't really any major changes, Mike, at the library board.
Nope.
So it's, looks pretty straightforward to me. Do you have any questions on those particular pages that were marked?
Thank you for the outstanding effort.
Well, we, we really do try very hard. The staff works extremely hard and, um, we are constantly battling technology. Probably as, as much as anybody else, but we have more people in there trying to use our technology. So we really push, um, the new kiosks that are on the front page of the, uh, the report that I gave you. Um, oh, and the, and the fuzzy guy, I shouldn't have put a label on it. The fuzzy guy, um, on the, uh, the right side is actually Pete the Cat. We had a Pete the Cat, um, he's a children's book character. Anyway, he, we had a stuffed Pete the Cat come in and he was quite popular. We had almost two hundred people to that program in the library, yeah. So he was trying out our new kiosk and checking out a book. But those are, have worked out, um, really well. People can put a stack of books inside the kiosk and they can check out five at one time. It just goes bing. They all have, uh, radio frequency identification tags in all the books now. So you can check out five at a time and the, and the, and the front of the kiosk spits out a little receipt and so you're all set to go within, within seconds, so. But at the same time, the staff who work the desks are also really busy with people who, um, still like that personal touch. They still wanna talk to somebody, they want someone to smile at them and, and welcome them into the building. So we, uh, we are really, uh, I think we're really pushing the envelope and we're doing, I, I'm really proud of everybody who works there, so.
Yeah, you know, I like the senior center. I hear a lot of good comments about the library.
Oh, good. I'm glad, Steve.
Those types of, uh, operation are so important to the health and vitality of the community because they serve real important needs and, and, um, I think people are, in my estimation, people are served in the library and senior center with, with respect and care and trying to meet their needs. I looked on the front page of the bullet points you have, you did a number of things during the year to meet what the people needed. It wasn't like, no, we can't do it. This is what we need to do, let's get this done. And, and it's nice to see that happen because that's how it works, so.
Yes, we, um, I'm sort of driven.
Really?
So, yeah, did you notice? Yeah, I'm sort of driven and we really do try to keep up, otherwise if we fall behind, we will, we'll never catch up again. So, um, technology really is, is driving the world and the library world, um, for sure, so.
Yeah.
Um, but we are, um, oh, we added shopping baskets. That's a pretty interesting, you know, significant piece. And, um, I have yet to see babies in there yet, but, uh, people have been using them for other books and a lot of the families who bring in their kids and they, they love, and hopefully they dump in more books than they could, they could possibly carry out, so. Um, we, we combined the two desks, the service desk together and that's worked out really, really well. We're really happy about that. It's given us more shelving space for the collection by moving the desks together. And I think it's been very successful. Um, the friends have been fabulous again this year. They've done two book sales. They just finished a book sale this last weekend, um, and I haven't heard the total amount yet, but I'm sure they did really well. And the friends have also been helping us with the gardens. I think the gardens look so wonderful and I'm so thrilled with the way the, the outside of the building looks now. It looks like it's a, a library now. It looks very welcoming and the brick walkways, it's, I'm, I'm really proud of it, so.
Yeah, we are too, so thanks for both that and the senior center. So we have pages fifty-eight through fifty-eight F, fifty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, and one fifteen. So we'll bring those forward for consideration for questions.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on any of those pages? I'll give you a minute to take a quick look at them again if you need to.
Could you just go through and talk about the, the large swings? Um, by large, I mean double digits, like, I see several. The county grant is projected to increase forty-six percent almost. Revenues in general, intergovernmental, forty-four percent.
Um, the Dane County grant, um, that increased because, um, okay, the, the Dane County reimburses, um, libraries for the amount of circulation that they, that they send out, you know, people that borrow the circulation. And, um, they base it on, it's sort of like a three-year cycle. So Fitchburg, um, just opened three years ago and they were never really counted. So this year, they were finally counted and we were reimbursed, um, from Fitchburg for the amount of, of materials they had borrowed from the Oregon library. So that's why there's a jump there.
And that'll go on? Is that kind of the thought process?
Well, it, it just depends on how much, um, in the future, how much Fitchburg continues to use the Oregon materials. We have a, we probably have a, um, how can I say this, um, a richer collection than they do because they're just starting out brand-new, so we have more of an in-depth collection, you know. If someone wants a more unique piece, we probably have it in Oregon. So it just depends. But now they are caught up, so we, that, uh, any increase would not be that large again.
So I see that there's, um, about a seven thousand dollar increase projected over where we are right now. And part of that probably is where we expect to be come the end of the year, 'cause I understand there's three months left.
Right.
Um, but, but is, is that kind of how you're getting to that larger number? Do you feel comfortable with that larger number?
I think so. I think it's, I think it's pretty realistic. We just, it's, it's really, it, it's sort of a, I don't wanna call it a guessing game, but we're just, you know, as Lisa and I have talked over the last six months, it's, it was really hard to gauge for how the end of the year is going to work out. And, um, there's always a, we always build a cushion into the budget in case, um, for example, someone does go on family medical leave that we didn't know about before. So, um, as far as the Dane County money, uh, that's what they're projecting, yeah.
Um, so then if we move beyond revenues, um, when I was looking, uh, further down, um, other supplies and expenses, the, there's a large swing there. Do you have any, any explanation as to, as to that? Were those one-time expenses this year that were related? Like I noticed you had replaced a furnace.
Right.
Is that how we got to thirty-five and now ten is more, more realistic going forward?
Right, well, we budgeted, um, last year twenty thousand dollars for the replacement of furnaces and we only had to do one. But see, 'cause they're, they were all put in at the same time, Jeff. They were all put in when the building was built back in ninety-six, was it? Ninety-six, so we're hedging our bets as to how many are gonna go out. I mean, there's six furnaces in that building and they're all residential grade. So eventually, they're all gonna go out, so we're sort of on pins and needles, just waiting for the next one to go. I think the one last year went out just before, just after Christmas, so. So we're sort of waiting.
So I, I confused my question by talking about furnaces, but thank you for explaining that because that would have been my next question. What about supplies? How, other supplies and expenses? And I know there's a budget noted here, twenty sixteen impact fee refunds. Um, so, so the year-to-date budget was seventy-five dollars, the year-to-date actual is thirty-five thousand.
Oh.
And then the department budget in sixteen is nine thousand seven hundred.
Those are the impact fees, Jeff.
Those are the impact fees that we're paying back.
That's how we got to thirty-five this year. I got it.
Well, that's impact fees, right.
And by the end of the year, we'll be at the seventy-eight thousand.
So ninety-seven hundred is more normalized. It's.
Well, that's, that's what.
No, that's, that's impact fees again next year. Yep, that we have to pay back through, um, April eleventh or April tenth, if they're not spent.
Yeah, so kind of the, um, there's kind of a bubble and we've gotten through the majority of it, but we're now on the backside of it.
Correct.
And we'll probably be working through it until we get to seventeen.
Correct.
Yeah.
But once, once, once we reach April tenth, from April eleventh through November something, sometime, I don't, I don't even know the dates anymore. We have until November twenty-first of two thousand seventeen to spend those funds. So after April eleventh forward through the next timeframe, I can't remember the end date, um, we have until, um, November of two thousand seventeen to spend those funds.
That's when the board, a couple of months ago, I mean, you know, did the three-year extension, that's what Lisa's talking about, for those, for that set of impact fees collected. There, there's four, there's four sets of dates for impact.
Three or four.
Three or four.
And some we refunded because we didn't spend them the way they needed to be spent and some just literally need to be spent the way that they need to be spent or, or they'll be refunded.
We're, we're having to refund them based on state statutes at this point, yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on the library budget?
This is the first year we've had the impact fees in the budget actually, right Lisa? I mean, it had in print that they're actually listed as a line item.
Well, the, yeah, because this is the first year we had this, we had to pay them back.
Yeah, that's new.
Yep. Yeah, that totally makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I look at one fifteen quick?
You certainly can. You certainly can.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I thought you would be on that page. Okay, so we have the motion second to the library budget. One last time, any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. I am on both the library and the council on AG, and I think both these ladies do an excellent job, Susan and Allison.
Thank you. We would agree.
Yep.
Thank you, Darlene.
So, we're on item twenty-one, continuing overview of 2016 budget and question or issues from board members.
We have nothing new unless there's board members with questions.
Okay, we got fifteen minutes. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.